We're good to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM and I'll hand it over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The Council Corporation Township Hornbeam would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is treaty nine, nineteen oh five to nineteen oh six territory. The traditional lands of indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you review and note any changes to the addenda? We do have five additions listed there. And if I can get a mover and a seconder for the agenda as amended, moved by Counselor Peter Kissamaker, seconded by Counselor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as amended. Those in favor? And that is carried. Yeah, item number five is the Declaration of Key Area Interest, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Council, you can do that anytime through the out of the meeting if such a situation arises. I do have one form in hand right now for item fourteen point four of the agenda staffing. And that's for myself. So the Deputy Mayor will take over during the closed session during that time. And moving on, we do have a presentation tonight. Our draft audited financial statements are in and Mitch is with us here to present. Thank you so much for being in person. This is great and I'll hand the floor to you.
No problem at all. Always a pleasure to come up to Hornbeam. I've been coming up here for a number of years, whether fishing or other work purposes. But it's definitely a community that I was holding a high regard. We are very appreciative of being selected as your auditors for the next three to five years. And we're hopeful that we give you a satisfactory, happy audit experience. We weren't too much of a pain on anybody. But as we are right now, if we could go to the second slide, please. Where we are right now is as of today, we are primarily done the audit with the exception of a few minor administrative roles, which include the final sign offs of the audit file, council's approval of financial statements and the receipt of our final management representation letter that we'll send off to Richard in the next couple of days. Just to go over just understanding what the financial statement audit is. What our job is to do is we are to give you an opinion on your financial statements that they are not materially misstated. We do this by reviewing the design and implementation of the controls in place of the township. We have to identify the risk of fraud or error to figure out what account really might have any risk associated with them. We tailor audit procedures to address the risks that we assess. We address the township's ability to continue its going concern. We evaluate appropriateness of accounting policies under the P S A accounting standards. And then we evaluate the overall presentation and content of the financial statements. Will communicate with council any significant audit findings? And if we can go to the next slide, please. The rules that we have over fraud really is we need to identify where is there a risk of fraud in the financial statements? So in order to satisfy this, we hold discussions. We met with Bodhi, we met with Richard, met with Jennifer, went over processes, figured out is there any weak areas that fraud could occur? And based on our review, we are not aware of any specific risk areas to the township. We can go to the next slide, please. So the audit scope and our findings. So the concept of materiality is big in the audit sector. I'll give you a quick understanding what that is. But materiality is a dollar value threshold was where we as auditors cannot issue a clean audit opinion if we have individual or an aggregate errors over our materiality threshold. Any items around that? We need to bring forward to Richard and see if there needs to be adjusted. If not, we cannot issue a clean opinion. So that dollar value, which is set based on the CPA standards, which is a total expenses at three percent, came out to a hundred thousand dollars. And that's the exact same number as last year. So we know we were in the right ballpark with the number we came up to compared to where the predecessor auditor was. In terms of uncorrecting the statements, we have none to report and no control deficiencies to report. So so far, everything's looking good for the municipality. Next slide, please. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go through an overview of the financial statements and go kind of at a high level, highlight some of the slides and the important no disclosures and just go through the statements so everybody's comfortable where we landed at for the financial statements. In your package, you have the financial statements with you. The third page in there is the independent audit is reported. So if everybody can see, I highlighted in green, the in my opinion, the accompanying kind of consolation of financial statements present fairly. That is the accounting term for it's a clean audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can issue and we are comfortable saying that in our opinion that these statements are as right as we can make them within our hundred thousand dollar materiality threshold. Next slide, please. First off is our statement of financial position and that should be starting on page four, maybe five. Page five of your package. And what this is, is these are your financial assets on the slide. The statement of financial position is your snapshot at December thirty first on where all the balances lie. We have our cash and cash equivalents, which are the amounts held in charter bank accounts as well as in term to part of the state and or the credit union. We have our tax receivable. Tax receivable went up a little bit, but we have ran our procedures and a lot of that is accounting adjustments is what I'm going to call them. Because in prior year audits, there was a significant amount written off and new evidence has come forward for the collectability primarily from the ministry amounts. Correspondence with the ministry is saying that amount will be paid. So we were comfortable adding that back in there and showing that as a receivable amount as opposed to a doubtful account. So that's why you're seeing increase. It's not as much if people aren't paying their taxes. It's we found more that's collectible essentially from accounts receivable. There's really two big items that break up this. It's your water and sewer receivables of about a hundred and forty five thousand. General accounts receivable, which is related to your road, can we roadwork on cost sharing agreements that the township has in place, as well as the biggest part is nine hundred and sixty six thousand worth of government grants receivable, primarily from the airport project. The portfolio investment that just represents the housing corporation or the township through the housing corporations investment in the hotel, which is very nice to stay at, I'll add to that. And then inventories for resale. What that is that December thirty first, that's the jet fuel that's on hand at the airport. Please. When you get down into the statement of financial position. What you see is non-financial assets in your surplus. Capital assets, it went up in the year due to a few items going on. Primarily the one point one million dollars worth of capital additions. That's related to your Third Avenue reconstruction, your ballpark diamond, your jet fuel tank at the airport and some significant equipment at the fire department. And then as for other assets, municipality did invest additional properties in the year, about a hundred thousand dollars worth there. And our prepaid expenses is up primarily related to an environmental insurance contract that was signed at the end of the year. Next slide, please. This is your breakdown of accumulated surplus. I put this first just before the liabilities to go through that, just because I wanted to highlight that number for total reserves and reserve funds of one point three million dollars. The only real concern that I see, and it's not really concerns, more just an air, not an air, somewhere I just want to highlight is that one point three million dollars has been earmarked for specific purposes from your surplus. As it stood at December thirty first, there was about nine hundred and five thousand dollars worth of cash in the bank account. So it is worth noting that the reserve funds are not fully funded at the end of the year. So this is a note financial statement that brings up all the reserve fund. It's just one of the notes that I wanted to bring some attention to, just to make everybody comfortable on that. Next slide, please. And now as we go into the financial liabilities, these still are your liabilities at December thirty first. Accounts payable is down. Deferred revenue that is increasing, but that's increased for the purposes of putting funds aside towards next year's larger projects. That's going to be the Third Avenue reconstruction continuing as well as the arena project. So those are funds that have been received. That haven't been spent yet because they're being earmarked to be spent in twenty twenty five. The one big item really that went on in the year and this is the asset retirement application. So this is a rather new standard that resulted in the prior year financial statements being qualified on. Qualified, I mean, not the highest level, not the cleanest level of opinion. But a new report was produced by council and management, essentially breaking out the future costs of the landfill. When a landfill is said to be closed, what it requires is final cover worth of soil, sod, as well as a post-monitoring period, just to make sure that there's no groundwater contamination, a lot of engineering costs. So the new standard wanted all that picked up as well as the fact that the landfill is being expanded for another twenty five years of useful life. That's the counting number is what I want to highlight because it is twenty five years down the road now until it's anticipated closure with another twenty five year monitoring period. It's an accounting number that it is something that the council has to be aware of and puts funds aside for maybe a little bit every year. But it's at a point where it's so far down the road, who knows what that final cost is going to be. It's just the best estimate as of right now. And finally, long-term debt. Long-term debt is just a normal pay down to debt that's a decrease on that side, on that side as well as about sixty thousand more through the housing corporation was taken on for their new doors. I'll pause there. Is there any questions on the statement of financial position at all? So that snapshot at where the balances arise at December thirty first.
Any questions from council? Again, Beris, you can carry on.
Okay, next slide. Oh, this is the asset retirement application. This is essentially that landfill cost once again. But it kind of breaks down that every year you see that number go up as inflationary amounts keep increasing the dollar value. So it is another note that I just wanted to highlight, it's a little bit new. It's for accounting purposes, it's exciting item in the year that got settled and got us to a clean opinion. So we did just warrant a slide on that, but I think we've talked a good amount to the landfill already. And next slide, please. So statement of operations. And so this is your statement of your revenue and your expenses ins and outs from January one, twenty twenty four to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And as we can see, revenues went up about six hundred thousand dollars in the year. Primarily what increases coming in is recoveries of old property taxes that we talked about from the ministry. So that's about two hundred and fifty thousand worth of the expense of that increase that you can see in the rent amount. That's where that's recorded is because the amount of the write offs last year was high and new evidence has come out to support the collectability that got picked up as a revenue this year, because it was shown as an expense last year. Other than that, it's generally a one hundred dollar increase in the tax levy through normal appreciation on properties as well as the council approved rates. And some of that's come through. And about two hundred thousand more in provincial grants. So when we look at the provincial grants and where all these grant fundings were. The federal grants, so Canada Community, so the gas tax fund had about eighty one thousand dollars spent towards the airport, investing in Canada's infrastructure program at a hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Same funder had a hundred and twenty eight thousand for Third Avenue and Fednor funded eight thousand for economic development. When we look at provincial grants, really what that is, is that Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund that funded five hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. And that's an unconditional, so not specifically earmarked for any funding. And then the new ballpark got a hundred and fifty thousand from Trillium. Next slide, please. When we look at expenses, I'm not going to go too deep into expenses because they're about two thousand dollars higher than last year. So in terms of staying on budget, total budgeted amount for accounting purposes was set to six point seven four one million and we came in at six point seven million, very, very close to last year. So in terms of maintaining and staying within budget, the township was in good place. Note either the financial statements actually breaks out how those are segmented. So salaries and wages stayed relatively consistent, materials, a little small decrease in materials. The contracted services were small increase there. Rents and financial expenses, that's primarily where you see why that landfill increase. And then everything else stayed relatively consistent on an expense basis year over year. So there's not too much to talk about on that front. But that's how we arrive at our final deficit and the deficit does show in the year about seven hundred thousand dollars. A lot of that is because funding was earmarked for next year. So if it was funding that could have been recognized in the year, what away is going to be spent next year on these big projects, Third Avenue, as well as the arena. And there are some accounting numbers as well that aren't cash in nature. So the amortization on your tangible capital assets, that was about a million dollars. You had a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of that landfill liability cost just to get it to an upgraded estimated amount. As well as the recoveries of the new information that supported the receivable of property tax. That was about three hundred thousand dollars on that front. So there are some accounting numbers that are skewing that deficit in the year. But when it comes into staying on budget for the expenses, the municipality did a relatively good job. Next slide, please. As CPA professional standards, we do need to confirm that we're independent. And under these standards, as your auditor, we're not allowed to have any financial or vested interest in the municipality. I'm confirming that we do not have any financial or vested interest. Myself personally aren't, the only audit team doesn't have any interest in municipalities' financial results. There's no barriers to us being your auditor and we're within compliance for CPA's policies. That concludes my presentation. Is there any questions on the financials?
I'll open the floor for the council. Nobody's standing, go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment that was very clear. I understood what you said. Thank you. Great job.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, I just have one. So when you're talking about us spending the money that we earmarked and then that will decrease that deficit amount.
Yeah.
So as we finish those projects.
Yeah.
That should help us as we move forward to show, like it just gets unnerving when you see a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit and you've stayed on target with your expenses.
Absolutely. And that all comes down to this accrual basis of accounting. What you're going to do is that funding came in, but it didn't get recognized into revenue. So it didn't show up on that statement of operations that break out your surplus. That got moved into a liability for to be recognized into revenue once that expenditure is made. Now, what's going to happen next year is if you go and spend a million dollars on the arena, you're going to see recognition from the federal grant amount of a million dollars for that. But you're not going to see an expense because the upgrades are going to show up on the capital assets on the balance sheet. So really, it's just essentially a timing difference of when the cash goes out and when you recognize the revenue. One of my old mentors always say, set of financial statements is easier to see, easiest to see over two years to capture all these timing differences. But once you do spend that money, you'll actually see that revenue get recognized and it moves out of the liability into the asset as well as into the revenue to say that, yes, we spent it. Because it is specifically earmarked. Does that clear things up?
Yeah, definitely. That definitely helps. Any further questions at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you for presenting and being here in Hornbeam.
No, I don't.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure, Mitch. We do have a motion on the floor. If we can get a mover and a seconder. Oh, sorry, Richard has his. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Richard. I can't see Richard, you're a small.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. What I wanted to do was just add to Mitch's presentation. Jennifer, if you could throw up the next two slides and this sort of goes together. What I wanted to do is show council and the public what, how we did as far as our twenty twenty four budget to actual and then the adjustments to bring to the financial statement deficit. So Jennifer, do you have that first slide of mine, which is the?
Did not have it ready, so bear with me.
Okay, that's fine. So what, and I'll just summarize as we're doing this. You'll see that the final surplus, when we go back to our budget method. So our revenues and expenses for twenty four versus budget versus actual, we actually end up with a small surplus, twenty two thousand dollars. Twenty two thousand three hundred and ninety seven dollars for the township. And then the Hornbeam Corporation, Hosing Corporation, had a final surplus of forty five thousand dollars. And I thought while Mitch is there, we'll just go over that. I have all of the detailed sheets by department. I just didn't want to inundate council and everybody with them at this point in time. But I will provide them to everyone. So if there is any, any questions on the detail, we can get to that another time. But this is just an overall summary. And then the next slide, Jennifer takes those two surplus amounts and it shows what the adjustments are to, in order to get to the financial statements. So as Mitch has explained, we capitalized over a million dollars of the assets. We wrote off over a million dollars of the liabilities. And then there are the other adjustments that are done for the P S A accounting reconciliation, I guess. And it brings, those numbers then bring us to the, the financial statement deficit. So I wanted everybody to know, I think, I think the staff and the township have done a really good job in twenty twenty four at controlling spending and, and, and and bringing in revenue to come that close to the budget for twenty twenty four. So I just wanted to add that little bit as well. And maybe between the two, if anybody has any questions, then Mitch and I will try and answer them.
Thank you, Richard. And any questions from council? Okay, I don't see any, Richard.
Good.
I appreciate that. Okay, with no further questions, then we do have a motion on the floor. If I can get a mover and a seconder, moved by Counselor Dragos Stefanik, seconded by Counselor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township, the Hornbeam does hereby accept the draft consolidation financial statements for the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four, as prepared and presented by Stefan, Stefan is Z?
Stefan E. C.
Yeah, Stefan is, oh, I'm not really.
Yeah, there, yeah, it's, it's.
Could you say it one time, Mitch?
Stefan E. C.
Stefan E. C. Professional Corporation. Thank you.
Sis, all right.
Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay. Thank you, Mitch. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting, but you're welcome to.
I don't mind sticking around.
Yeah. At any time if you feel like, okay. We will not be offended.
I got the hotel booked, so I'm not trying to get back to the suit tonight.
Oh, okay, good, good. Yeah. There's quite a bit of moose and bears out.
I saw one bear and it's been a while actually since I've seen a bear driving up here. Ever since those big fires between here and White River, I haven't seen too much, but there was, there was a bear out on the highway coming out.
Okay. Okay, so moving on, we're on to item six point two. And if I can get a mover and a seconder and I'll open up the floor. Moved by Counselor Peter Kissamaker, seconded by Counselor Belinda Kissamaker. Where is the township of Hornbeam issued a request for proposals, RFP number twenty twenty five zero four fourteen, Third Avenue Reconstruction on March thirty first, twenty twenty five? And where is the township of Hornbeam received one proposal submission from C Villain of Construction Company Limited at a total construction cost of six, six million three hundred and eighty nine thousand nine hundred and thirty cents plus HST? And where is members of the senior management team reviewed above the plan and recommend entering negotiation with the bidder, pursuant to the township's procurement by law, as the proposal exceeds the project budget? Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornbeam does hereby direct the C A O and the mayor to negotiate the bid received from C Villain of Construction Company Limited for construction services for the Third Avenue Reconstruction Project as per council discussion. Be it further resolved that if negotiations are unsuccessful, council does hereby authorize the C A O to cancel the competition or call a new competition. Okay, I opened up the floor for discussion and Melanie, did you want to speak to this?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll refer council's attention to the memorandum received from North Rock Engineering. North Rock is the engineering firm that we have contracted to project management this project. And as the mayor stated, project tenders came in. And although we were originally quite excited, twelve well, the bid was taken down by twelve different vendors. We only received one bid. That was approximately two X our, our project budget, which really, really was disappointing and surprising to the senior management team. As per our policy, project bids received in excess of our project budget gives us two, two avenues to move forward that are, were clearly articulated in, in the, in the resolution. We have the choice to negotiate with, with the, with the vendor, which we received a bid. But because it's so vastly, so grossly above our project budget, I am, would like to ask council to also authorize us to, if negotiations are unsuccessful, to authorize us to cancel the competition and call for a new competition. I have discussed this with that North Rock Engineering and, and with, also with the senior management team. We have confirmed with Richard that we do have our funding will, will allow us to move forward and postpone the project until next year, so long as we're, we're complete by October two thousand and twenty six. Dwayne and I had a call with the utilities that need to be involved in the project and which is both Bell and Hydro One. And we have made arrangements to ensure that the utilities, the utility relocation does go ahead this year. So we will be ready to, to move forward next year in the event that, that we do have to, to go out to tender and call a new competition that work, that utility coordination or relocation will already be done. When, last week when we spoke to North Rock, one of their, their primary, their first response and their recommend, recommendation was that council consider, and I think in the options are, are really in or highlighted very well in this memo, is to reduce. is to reduce, reduce the scope of this project. And I said to them, I said, council's not going to want to do that. This project means a lot to us, and it means a lot to our community. And we tried really hard to, to really define the scope of this project. And we don't want to reduce it in order to fit the project budget. I think it would be a disservice to our community. So I think it's my recommendation. That's how we landed on the recommendation. I think that we would do better if we did call a new competition. If negotiations are unsuccessful and we really work hard and go out and find and find new contractors that might want to work with Horn Pain and really increase the competition in our community.
Thank you, Melanie. So I opened up the floor for discussion from council. Councilor Dragos Stavani.
Thank you, Mayor, to Melanie. I agree with you. If everybody read the report thoroughly on their option one, a lot of cutbacks. That's not the same project. We discussed hundreds of hours here at the Legion. That is a different picture that I see in my eyes. I, I can't go to option one. I mean, if you read and study, analyze it, no way. That's not even close. Will be discussed, argued, reach the consensus, and everybody finally agreed. Every look of them, Ben.
Yes. Councilor Kistamaker.
The one was basically having what we, if I remember correctly, please correct me, wrong. It was basically what we have now, but three feet wider, right? Without the bike lane, but everything was the same as what we got, but all brand new.
Yeah. Me the items, you'll see the other cutbacks.
I remember that was the, thought that was the equivalent of what the option was.
Let's ensure that we're on the same page. Can I defer to the Public Works Manager? And is what you're saying correct?
Correct. It was one meter width, page shoulders, right?
Addition of one meter page shoulders, okay.
So through you, Madam Mayor, doing, it's basically what we have, like, three feet wider. So it's an option of not having nothing or nothing at all of that? Basically is what we're asking?
Well, I think in this, you know. No, no. And, yeah, so in this, what's happened is we put out to tender what we agreed with from North Rock. Which, so a couple of things that's happened here. When I first saw this, I was like, how did it come in so much over when we had an engineer bring us numbers and we negotiated those numbers? So I'm not sure exactly where Villanov is getting their numbers. So I think sitting down with Villanov and having North Rock's numbers that they prepared for us last year and saying, okay, where are the increases? What are, what's the difference? And putting some pushback on Villanov. I'm totally in agreement with that and figuring that part out. Go ahead, Pete.
I completely agree, Madam America, because I think we're just looking at classic one-on-one commerce. And that's supply and demand.
Right.
So I think we are best to look further into, yes.
And I like the idea, I didn't know about this till Melanie just said it, that she'd briefly just before the meeting on it, was that the hydro and the bell, whereas initially, remember back in March, we weren't even sure if we were going to be able to move forward because of those utilities, those can move forward this year. So that would be taken out of the new scope. And there would be no waiting for that. There would be no waiting game for, basically, the, the new contractor would come in. It would be site-ready. Basically, you can take up, you wouldn't have to be worrying about the utilities, other than the ones that they're going to be fixing the water and wastewater, so. So I, I'm in agreement with this. I totally just, I think we need to push back and renegotiate and, and show that, because we did a lot of work last spring. And North Rock went back and forth with us. We really hammered it out. And our community, I, I think it's, it's one of those projects where we want to see it happen, and we save the money to do it. So I, I think we should push back. And the other part, too, that, which was beneficial, we talked about this, Melanie brought it up at one past meeting as well, was that we'll probably get a better competition if we RFP out late next fall than waiting so late into the spring.
So we're talking fall twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, we put a new RFP out this fall, excluding the utility moves, like, there's going to be some of these changes in that RFP. And then we go and we, and the completion date has to be October twenty twenty-six, you said, right? So it has to be completed next summer, but then we have a further competition. So, and I, and I have no problem doing that. And I have no problem shouldering that in, in the face of our community. I think it's a better, you know, we have to go one more year with the, with the road. Yes, we do. And and I just.
We gotta be accountable for the money spent.
Yes, and I, I do think Melanie has some other good ideas and further in the meeting about engineering services and looking ahead to help manage the project, too. We all know that we have a very small, condensed staff, and we don't want to overwhelm people either, right? Like, let's get the support seated. We're seeing there's some deficits there, and maybe we'll end up with the even better project in the end. Go ahead.
Can you clarify, please, on the report, you say pushback. What do you mean by that when they discuss what they're building? What, what's, what you mean by pushback, please?
Well, really questioning. I, I have no problem sitting down and questioning where they got six point, what is it? Six point three, six point four million? When we had a detailed report from an engineering firm on the costs, and they cost-sourced that for us. They went back and forth. We paid for that quote last year, like, I just, yeah. So I think there's some, let's sit down and see if they can come to a resolution on that. You know? Yeah, so that's, that was what I meant by pushback. Go ahead, Belinda.
I think it's worth a try. I think we have to do. The thing is, like, what do we do if we don't get what we actually want or need or, you know? It's gonna be, how many breakdowns do we have to go through with our piping within the community? It's getting out of hand. Where, where do we draw the line?
Well, I think, go ahead, Melanie. Go ahead.
Well, and I think that's why there's two options presented in the resolution. If allow directing the C A O and the mayor to negotiate the bid, perhaps we're able to negotiate it to a place where it does meet our budget and we're able to move forward with the project that we want. And this can get done this year. That would be wonderful. That would be a win-win on both sides. But if that's not the case, then we can do a new competition and invite other competitors to come in. And, but the way it is now, the township of Horn Pain is not in the financial position to accept a bid two times what the budget is. It would, even if we wanted to accept that bid, they're just not able to. So.
So I think, so I think the process is there. Let's renegotiate or try and negotiate to see if we can get the project done we wanted. If that doesn't happen, we have to go back to tender. But then maybe we have a council discussion on that. If that's when we are going to lessen the project or what have you, I'm not sure. But that opens up the floor for negotiation that the C A O can bring it back, that, with that recommendation. Go ahead, Peter.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to whoever can answer this. What source or what? Who can we go to to ask an honest opinion on? Are we being gouged or are we, is this just the new reality of things? Because everything has went up. The business I work for, everything's went up twofold. So is this something, is this the new reality that we can't deal with? I just don't want to waste time either. And I would like to know, is there, is there a source, an information source that we can go, is it, or is it just, I'm not going to say price gouging, that's not wrong. Phillop Street is very good. So I, I take that back. But I just would like to say, like, think, is it just a matter of everybody's busy and they're filling the bids that they really don't want to work?
I defer. Go ahead.
So I, I had a very similar thought process. I did read out, reach out to people in the industry that I would consider industry experts. And I think it's probably a little bit of some different, you know, column A, column B. I think the township can expect that, you know, can expect to see
A little bit.
that prices increased. And we did build in a contingency into our budget in the event that, you know, to, to account for inflationary measures, because things are going up drastically for all, for across projects everywhere, particularly construction. And we are in a real remote community. So there was certainly some wiggle room within our budget and within our funding envelope to account for that. However, two close, it wasn't completely two X, but close to two X was much more than, than even the industry experts that I spoke to. They felt like that was much more than necessary or than reasonable.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I think, too, it's fair to say that because we were so late getting the tender, the RFP out, we get really close the gap. Like, you think of, you have to, so if we were to award it tonight and we want this project done, the poles and the utilities still need to be moved. We're coming on to June. And the whole Third Ave needs to be ripped up and the water changed out. Like, that's a very short timeline. So I would suspect that come, if an RFP goes out late in the fall and, and then we award something early January, we're going to have a better competition. I see Richard nodding. Do you want to?
I, I just wanted to add that comment, just exactly what you had said. From my experience, if you can get a tender out the very latest January, and these contractors, they want to get jobs on their books for the summer. They want to know what they're doing with their equipment and their, their staff. And once they get their, their work lined up, then if there's more work to quote on, then it's a higher price, because they may be bringing in extra staff or renting extra equipment or whatever. I think we missed the, the, the timeline on this one. That tender should have been out months ago instead of in May.
Okay, so I'm, like, I, I'm hopeful that we can get the utilities moved this summer. That can move forward, that part. And, and then we're looking at a very, much cleaner project next year and get the tender out earlier. And, and I'm not sure, Richard, if you have a target for that, like I said, late fall.
I, I think it would need to be late fall, when they've got their, their twenty twenty-five projects done. There still is the possibility of meeting with the current bidder and seeing if we can get it to a reasonable amount. But if that fails, then I would suggest that by at least November, yeah, the, the tender is out December, November, December, and, you know, we can award the contract hopefully in January and, and the way we go for next year.
Yeah, and, and it may be even so in the negotiations and talking about the different prices, this might actually come to light with Villanov, is they may have had to bid trying to figure out where are we going to get the resources and wanting to ensure they put a bid in for us. So we don't know until we have those discussions with them, so. Okay, so is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on to departmental reports. We have the C A O report. And Melanie, would you like to speak to your report?
Yes, please. So I'll just note that I'll just open my report with, this is my final C A O report for my tenure as interim C A O for the Township of Horn Pain. So my last in-person council meeting. So I wanted to thank council and, and mayor for having me. It was, it was a great time. I learned a lot. It was a wonderful learning experience. And an honor to be in your community. So.
Thank you. I have to say thank you. I just have to say, I'm, I'm, it went by fast. That went by fast. Yes.
Yeah. I was, I always jokingly say, and Jennifer has heard me say it many times, I was here for a good time, not a long time. But it was, it was great. So thank you very much to council and, and for the community for having me. So I just wanted to make a note of a few things. So I really wanted to wrap up because there's really lots of really big projects on our plate right now. And I did want to, of course, touch on the H A A T H M expedience issue. So I've met with Crescent Engineering and continue to investigate the solutions for this issue. We will have them on later on further in the agenda to specifically discuss this and, and make a recommendation to, to, to move this forward. We also, we've also enlisted them to assist with documentation review, completion of a funding application, and to ensure that our reporting requirements for our environmental compliance approvals are done, and that's a requirement of the province. And those kinds of things, because we do have such a small staff and everybody's working at their capacity, that's something that we have found kind of gets to the side of our desk and sometimes we have fallen behind on. So all of those reported requirements now are being taken care of. And we've made that a priority to get that done. Third Avenue Reconstruction, so that I think we, we've taken care of. Horn Pain Arena Expansion and Arena Rehabilitation. So I know that this has been a huge project that has been on, on the council agenda for some time. The senior management team met with J L Richards a few weeks ago, so I can really understand this project. We have funding to move ahead with the Horn Pain Arena Expansion. But we do not have funding, and we do not have a timeline or contractors in place for the Arena Rehabilitation project. This was very concerning to me, because what we're basically doing is planning to build on to a building that's not structurally sound in the first place. We do have a engineering report from Tolic that provided clear timelines and and in a recommendation that said council should complete these, these complete these, this recommendation within a year. And that year has come and gone, and we need to have a plan in place to, to do this. I've asked J L Richards to put that to me in writing for two reasons. I don't, it's not my recommendation to postpone the arena expansion. But it is my strong recommendation that we really prioritize the rehabilitation. Because I really see, see ourselves getting into trouble down the road into a situation like Elliott Lake, Terrence Torrance, Pearlings Club. If we don't fix the root problem before we do the expansion, because we have that Tolic report, we really are we really are flirting with serious liability if something happens. So that was my, my intention for asking J L Richards for that letter is first, so that everybody on council understands that. But so also, we can take that to and funders like N O H F C or other funders and say, you know, our arena, our community center is the heart of our community. We need to prioritize this as. We need to, as a priority project, because if we don't get this fixed, we might not be able to do the arena expansion. That is so important to us, because if we don't have an arena, we're potentially at risk of, of families leaving our community. So that's all to say, A M O delegations are due at the end of this week, and it was going to be something that I was going to write in my A M O delegation. Going to write in my AMO delegation. But certainly wanted to get the. Direction and approval of council before I did that, uh because I do know that that's. Very important. And um both the mayor and I will be speaking, um will be meeting. The Honorable George Peery in mid-June, so it's something that I think that we can also discuss. With uh with the minister there, the third um. Action is to direct the EDO to submit a phase one funding application to NOHFC to fund these um repairs ASAP. There's pros and cons to this approach because it might take priority if we have. You know, if we're asking for funding from NOHFC, what do we want to prioritize? The arena, the Hallmark Center? We certainly can have both, but. Then we're competing with ourselves. So it's something that council really needs to think about.
Just a question on that to interject here, Melanie, where are we, do we have any um news on where we're at with the ownership of the? Hallmark Center?
Not at this time, I think it's still gonna take some time, so we may want to put the Hallmark Center ask on the back burner and. Prioritize the arena at this time?
Yes, yeah, I I'm definitely in favor of that, council, I think we need to prioritize.
Absolutely, one percent agree with you, Melanie, thank you for bringing it up. When I've talked about this, it's absolute paramount. My boys have uh. They're all done, they're they're growing up, using arena and now they're adults. But I'll tell you from experience, if it wasn't for arena. My boys wouldn't have had nothing, and if you, we talk about uh bringing our community forward. We uh, we allow the arena to shut down, we are literally digging our own grave. And uh, I absolutely agree with you and thank you for bringing it up, and we do have to prioritize that arena above everything going forward. There is always options for everything else, there is no option for the arena, and you're right. We do put an addition on something that is gonna be closed down a year later because we didn't do what we did, and even worse. If we were to experience what the um LA Lake or other towns have experienced. How could we even live with ourselves? We had, and so number one, we do have the have the arena, the roof done. And we have to put that ahead of everything, like going forward, we really do. And I and and I believe there's funding out there, but we have to prioritize it. And then once we get past that, we can move on to the next thing.
Yeah, I I'm thinking too, it's something that we look into the Green Municipal Fund. And touch base for our curling club too, like if we're going to be looking at it, we need to ensure that. When the curling club opens, we're doing that feasibility study to pay for that plant. Like I think it's a he- a bigger picture here of maybe three different phases, like get the roof. Go for some funding for that where we can, go ahead.
May I also add, Madam Mayor? The gymnasium or the gym. We may have to look at alternatives, but no matter what, we have to get it out of the curling club, we promised these people for years now. I've been on council now for six and a half years and I'm I'm tired of repeating myself, we we have the best uh intentions. Intentions don't get you anywhere. Resolve does. And I believe that uh. Council Kissmaker, I I really believe a really viable idea, if the worst case scenario, we could. There is, I I, all I'm gonna say is there's uh uh there's alternatives and we have to explore them all. I don't wanna go into it because there's like, there's lots of things, but yeah, I really do believe there's a financial viable. Ideas and and or options and uh, yeah, those those curlers. Men and women of the curling club, mostly women, they 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 work so hard and we haven't given back what we promised. And I think there's, if we don't give back what we promised because we can't is one thing. There's not an option, but I do believe there's options and we have to, we can't put it off anymore because. We haven't gained in, we haven't gained one inch in the last six and a half years that I've been here, and I'm and I'm 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 disappointed in myself. Cause we couldn't do nothing. Because we're we're looking at the bigger picture and we're looking at. We're gonna get this uh grant, we're gonna, that Stacy got for us, and we're gonna build this, we could build that, and there's all of these roadblocks. Well, guess what, we're gonna come and go, and the next group are gonna be in here, and they're gonna be dealt with the same amount of it, and because it's their first term. It's not gonna be the importance, it won't be uh the top of the list where. We've long, and 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 Council Stefanic is even longer in the tooth than us, and he's probably going, holy jeez, we've been at this for a long time, we're still haven't. Done what we said we would.
Okay, so do you want to have a a discussion item on the agenda?
I would love it.
The weight room facility? Okay.
Yeah, can different ideas, so I think Council Kissmaker has an amazing idea on it.
Okay.
Great suggestion.
We can come prepared for June eleventh for that, we'll have a open discussion. And uh for the EDO. Sorry, Jen, go ahead.
You mentioned open discussion, I just wanted to, are you in council discussion or open?
Alex, council discussion, yeah. And uh. Oh, I lost my train of thought there, sorry. Go ahead, Melanie.
I just wanted to say, I think one of the reasons for this is, one, just um. Something that I have. That I have seen or. During my tenure here is one thing is, we've got so many balls in the air. And one of our processes here, where we do have a project is that we submit an RFP for a project. And we bring somebody in and at this time, um at this current point in time. I think we've got eight different engineering firms managing different projects. Some of them are out of province firms, some of them are in province. So the left hand often doesn't know what the right hand is doing, and there's an opportunity for to find um. Some, there's multiple opportunities for um efficiencies. To give council one example. We had two different firms working in and around our landfill site, um both of them needed to deploy a drill rig. They were both deploying drill rigs for Marathon Drilling and Dwayne and I just happened to realize on one call. That they were. And I was like, whoa, stop the bus here, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be doing this, so it's in my report is one of my recommendations is. That we um. In the discussion with Crescent Engineering, I've asked them to put an expression of interest to provide municipal engineering support. That would just help us kind of manage and organize this. To explore efficiencies, to provide um project management skills. We, our staff is very, our team is very, very good at getting grants, but I think. Walking through the steps from project start to finish, I think we certainly can use support. And and so I I, it is a recommendation we do. That we do investigate that, we would have to to speak with a firm. And or submit another request for proposals in line with our procurement policy. But um I think that it is very prudent to investigate something like that.
Any questions from council on that? Counselor Davis?
We'll go back to original issue, we're talking about arena expansion and the rehab. Through you, Mayor, to um EDO, when does the grant expire for those entire projects that they? Obviously. We have no choice, uh since I worked in Parks Area most of my young life. There is no other alternative, new structure, I say, not only the roof, but you've got the I-beams we were mentioned, there's other things that have to be done. In a facility such as that, and we have no alternative, that's the sad part. Should have been looked at four or five years ago.
Just clarity on that, though, with the report. Are you talking about the report we received in September of last year, cause you said it's already bypassed. The report, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page with.
It was a Tolic report? I don't know what the exact date was the. It was dated December two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, okay. Two thousand twenty-four, okay, so we're we're still within the year, right now. Okay, so we have, cause I was, when you had said that, I was concerned, I'm like, I didn't know we had bypassed a year. Okay, so we definitely have to move forward on that, I'm totally. In agreement with the recommendations from the CIO, that's in your preview to move forward with that. Motion to those. Um if we could just have a follow-up, but as the transition for the new incoming CIO. For our July meeting to see where that's at. And maybe a fuller timeline to include the curling club. Because that plant is gonna go and we don't have the money, the funds for that. And just for clarity's sake, uh. Through the CIO to the EDO, that funding envelope actually expires March twenty twenty-seven, right?
Uh no, so we have a recording, we we have a full year after that.
Okay, so can we do the expansion in twenty twenty-seven? Are we able to do that? Yeah, okay. Okay, so I, so maybe in July, if we just have a clear date, clear timeline of the full timeline, if we were to. Fund the rehabilitation part, where that would put the expansion part, and then of course. With the Green Municipal Fund, I don't know if I'm saying it's the right one, it's the the curling club, is that, thank you, Stacy. Um I know the curling club plant can be incorporated through that, I'm just wondering if there's any other. Options we could get with uh energy efficiency in that as well, uh go ahead, Stacy.
So um my recommendation would be to look at the green is a fun first, because we get to include. A lot, we have the reports for the energy audit and the assessment, and that is a bigger envelope of money, but we. Our report would have to come back to either friend, because we have a portion that we would have to take. For both those, so I think um putting the um phase one in, fine, if if council. Let, do you want me to put phase one in on all the structural stuff in this health report or just the arena group? So I need to know that and how much money um we we can afford as a municipal project. But um the Green Municipal Fund could potentially have some of those same. Maybe not all the structural stuff in operations, but we have the reports that we could potentially get new energy efficiencies in the. The ODA stuff and the efficiencies in that one.
They want its ODA, sorry. Okay, okay, go ahead.
So that's the, that's the Green Municipal Funds, which has the, they would assess all the community buildings, or municipal community buildings. We could have all the same number of, and that's up to twenty million dollars and it's over an eight-year period.
Right, okay, okay, I just don't know if we have the time for that. To include that with the twenty twenty-seven. So I have no problem. Having that investigated as well, but understanding our timeline, that the funds that we did receive through the cultural recreation stream will expire. And then if we have to utilize NOHFC. And more. I leave it to to find the best option. Solutions that would allow us to utilize that um renovation money, so.
Yeah, I think we should be prioritizing. The structural viability is one, then the efficiency. You know. We uh those, cause that's another is. We get the, we do the uh roof. And then what we don't do, efficiency will have a gym attached to building the curling club because we want the compressor, so. We gotta, we gotta prioritize, and I think everybody's on the same page here.
The staff will review, will bring recommendations back to council.
Excellent.
Review the recommendations.
And I think we have some time, because the NOHFC is a meeting. So if we do an NOHFC application, hopefully it gets on that um agenda, go ahead.
I would like to make a suggestion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because the pro- the arena is a priority for us. Can we have a section of our agenda? Uh added that it's, we talk about it every time until it's complete, it's part of our uh. In the know where we are, what, so it doesn't get forgotten or left out or whatever, it's there, we're looking at it. And we have an update on what's happening and what's not happening, because what I'm finding is.
And here's to.
Yeah, you know?
Okay, uh Jen, go ahead.
Um I can add a standing item if you would like for that. Standing item?
Please.
Yeah, um and I'll figure out where to put it under.
Okay, and we don't need to have it on the next meeting, because we. We gotta let staff have some time, but definitely.
Please.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, I'll tell you why. I thought most of the problems were handled up there. It's the first time I I hear there was not, no movement on 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 the arena facility, I mean. I don't get into the weeds with staff, I mean, Western Port comes through, they come back and present it, and normally we go now, no, no. What you're saying, sir, I concur one hundred percent.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, so um. Any further items that you need on that, okay, I thank you to uh the EDO and uh Melanie for taking that forward. I'm moving it. And definitely for our discussion. So we will have an arena discussion though for. On the eleventh, what was the title of that, sorry? That was for the weight room facility? Okay, uh. Anything else for your report, do you wanna continue? Any further questions from council? Okay, I just wanna say, I really think the idea of RFPing out for an engineering support is, I really like the idea. I just got here in our agenda when we talked about it later, I thought um it'll give. Elaboration between all our projects, we have someone that we can go to and vet some things through ahead of time. And even just ask, what do we need to do? Instead of um putting it out there ahead of time and having exactly sure, what are the right questions to ask, so. Okay, that being said, if there's no further questions. I'll put uh, I need to move in a second or two, acknowledge receipt, moved by. Counselor Golinckis to make your second by Counselor Drago Stefanic, be it resolved that council goes hereby acknowledge receipt of. The CIO departments for the report provided at the regular meeting of council, held on Wednesday, March twenty, or not March.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
You're just catching me, Jen, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. And that is carried. Okay, moving on to uh correspondence action items. Eight point one is the Strong Mayor's. If I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by Counselor Peter Kissmaker, second by Counselor Drago Stefanic. Whereas the Ontario Government has expanded the Strong Mayor Power to a hundred and sixty-nine additional municipalities. Which grants mayors in these municipalities more authority, particularly concerning the control of municipal budgets and planning decisions. And whereas this expansion has raised significant concerns regarding the centralization of power, erosion of local democracy. Re- reduced accountability and the potential for abuse of power. And whereas the expansion of Strong Mayor's powers undermines the collaborative nature of municipal governments. Governance and diminishes the role of the elected municipal council counselors in representing the diverse interests. Interests of the community. And whereas concerns have been raised about the negative impacts on public trust, democratic participation and municipal decision-making processes. If mayors are given the ability to bypass council decisions without adequate consultation or or oversight. Therefore, be it resolved that the council incorporation, the township of Hornpain exposes. Opposes the expansion of the Strong Mayor Powers. And council formally expresses its opposition to the Ontario Government's proposal to expand. Strong Mayor Powers to preserve local democracy, transparency and accountability. Be it further resolved that a copy of this motion be forwarded to the Ontario Premier, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Federation of Ontario. Northern Ontario Municipalities Phenomenon and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario AMO for further action. Um the only uh friendly amendment I'd like to make to the motion is just to add uh NOMA to the. Who it should be sent to, and I open up the floor for discussion, Counselor Stefanic. who it should be sent to, and I open up the floor for discussion councillor Stefanic.
Yeah, I have a real problem with this. What's gonna happen, the council that's fractured, it's gonna get more fractured, and I spoke to numerous people. There's only three mayors in northeastern Ontario that accepted that role. Ninety seven, that's as of May eighth. I'm not sure, I'm not in touch. And people that are fractured, it'd be so divisive. It's gonna be a war zone. When a person decides to hire a C A O, fire a department head. Unheard of. So for this one, I will, I'm asking for a recorded vote. Thank you.
And are you open up further discussion from? Counselor Peter.
Total agreement. It's just, uh, the idea of the mayor and council is is more than one council because you're representing the whole. And I think we're all in agreement. So, yeah, the, the, the recorded vote's good, but I think no matter what, it's, I think we're all on the same page here.
Yeah.
We're not, uh, to, to accept this or to agree with it and support it would be going backwards with our democratic, uh.
Well, it goes, it goes completely against having one employee as a C A O.
Yeah.
How can you go in and now fire a department head? Doesn't even make sense to me. And I'm in completely agreement because I don't want the powers as a mayor.
No.
And I'm glad our community wasn't, uh, hit the population stretch.
There's seven, seven councils, that was the six.
So.
In a spotlight enough.
Yeah, yeah, but my concern though, as a mayor sitting in the seat, like you hold a lot of responsibility to begin with.
As is, yeah.
And then now, like, I, I just wouldn't want that responsibility shouldered. I'm sorry, that's, yeah, so. I'm in complete agreement.
Yep.
Any further discussion from council? Okay, I'll, uh, delegate to Jen. Go ahead.
Okay, so as councillor Stefanic was once requested, uh, what is your vote?
In favor?
Perfect. Um, that should be Mayor Fort in favor. Councillor Belinda Kissamaker in favor. And councillor Peters. So that is carried.
Thank you, Jen.
Oh, and I should note councillor Ted Scheneman is, uh, not here today. So his, I believe, technically is abstained but deemed as a negative vote. However, it's just because he's not here, yeah.
Yeah.
Which will be noted in a minute, so.
Okay. Okay, eight point two is, um, the K G S Group for drinking water system, the H A A reduction. Final report. If I can get a mover in a second or please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the final report of the T H M, H A A's reduction for the Hornpan drinking water system as provided by K G S Group. Any discussion on that motion? I would say that we'll probably have further discussion in eleven point one, so we'll, uh, move the discussion to that portion. So those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, correspondence information only, if I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Any discussion on the items in the information only? I am going to highlight, um, nine point three, that I did make a public statement on May fifteenth after our council meeting and then, uh, proceeding some social media content that was brought to my attention and, uh, pursuant of our values and what we stand for in our strategic plan and, uh, the code of conduct that I administer through council. Um, I thought prudent that statement being made, I did, uh, through the C A O get legal guidance on that, um, statement for municipality. And, uh, I just leave it at that. It's, it's there for council to read and see. And I have no further discussion on, um, information only. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I will, um, acknowledge receipt to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, item number ten point one is committee and board meeting minutes. If I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the committee and board meeting minutes attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. And we have the AdS A meeting minutes from March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and the Northeastern Public Health Board Meeting Minutes from April third, twenty twenty five. Any discussion on either of those minutes? Go ahead councillor Kissamaker.
Could you, were, would you be able to explain the paramedic section on the cold gray that happened within the highway seventeen? Just interested in what happened. They had a cyber breach, which affected the North Shore Health Network, if I understood it right.
Uh, I can explain that if you would like. Oh, yes, please, my computer just went wonky on me, so I've just lost my, my whole. Go ahead. So councillor Kissamaker, um, the North Shore Health Network, uh, that's the hospital, um, I believe declared a cold gray, which was, their hospital underwent, um, they, for whatever reason, they had declared that they were not accepting any paramedics, any ambulances throughout the North Shore. And, um, they were redirecting, um, expenses to, um, the Blind River and or to St. Maria's. Which was you know, quite alarming, it was very disturbing, um, to, uh, to the paramedic services.
They able to resolve?
They were able to resolve it, but for the time being, um, AdS A did leadership of, uh, of the North Shore Health Network. Words and, um, they tried, they attempted to put into a contingency plan afterwards. Because it was, it was very disrupting to AdS A.
I can see that. Yeah, I was just interested because I never heard anything about it, so, yeah. I mean, on the other side, going up to Thunder Bay, they've had some issues too, when it comes to, uh, cold certain kind of colds. And, uh, through the hospital and how it affects the other communities, so it's kinda concerning on what everyone is doing about it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I believe that, uh, correspondence was from, was sent from AdS A, from, uh, Keith Bell, the C E O. To let them know how, you know, we wanted to put in place, uh, a better plan moving forward if this, in the event that that ever did happen again because, you know, nothing, nothing catastrophic happened, but they did see that, uh, there was obviously the potential if, if somebody was in grave danger and they had to, you know.
Especially the timeline.
Except it's half an hour or forty five minutes further from, uh, that's along to St. Marie, so it was very concerning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on the committee and board meeting minutes, councillor Stefanic?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Fort, and then under ten point two, I gave you, uh, a synopsis on transparent phenomenon, item by item. Sorry, apologize.
One second.
Sorry. I'm so sorry, I do that all the time.
That's okay, we'll get.
Ten years in a row, actually. Okay, thank you.
That's okay, that's all right. Any further discussion on ten point one? Okay, there being none, I, uh, put the acknowledge receipt to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Ten point two is councillor Stefanic's report on Phenomenon, if I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby receive councillor Stefanic's report on the twenty twenty five Phenomenon conferences information. Councillor Stefan?
This wasn't planned, you know that. It's a reaction, okay? It's, it's, yeah, when it's planned, you know, trust me. It overall, it was a great conference, um, now just going quickly. The bear pit was disappointing. I watched, uh, Wawa council, uh, the members of, uh, council from Wawa also felt the same thing. Minimum questions, you were cut off. Same old story. Well, what do you do about the rooms? Well, we spent millions of dollars last, the question wasn't what you spent last year before, the question is what you're gonna do now. It was stamped answers and then you, you could see the, the sort of, the lull in the crowd because it was one of the worst bear pits I've ever attended in ten years. Lack of action and, uh, more studies, two plus one, more studies to require you asking the question last council meeting, more studies. The health units are asking for money that they have to offer the mandatory programs they're not getting from the Ministry of Health. So guess what? It's being shifted to municipalities such as ours, my municipality. That's one of the reasons I checked into, one of the reasons for the increase that we received. Voltaire Northland, um, they're gonna start testing in twenty twenty six to run from Toronto to Timmins to Cochrane. Engine and three trains, as they call this, and like a little kids' plate. Turf and trade, this is really fascinating. In twenty twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, escalation of ten billion dollars for province of Ontario for in, construction industry. The cost will skyrocket. And under tariffs and trade, we're really stuck up at me. All the water treatment chemicals which we use here are under tariffs. Majority of stuff is produced United States of America, not Canada. So I'm not sure what they get their product, even though it's somehow partly done in Canada, majority is done in United States of America. There'll be, so there'll be an extra cost to that. Impact is no, there was no date or time for new assessment. I mentioned the last meeting as well. The interesting part was Roma is dealing with the rail, railway industry to pay for their right of way. And I don't know the person, Laurie, last name, if I guess the president. She said she's looking for positive outcome, me, with, meeting with the railways for the right of way for taxation. That was a comment she made, so I recorded that, so I'll make sure the council heard that and, um, the math tax, uh, was, it was, that was a very decent discussion. Most municipalities charge four percent. They're gonna go to five to six percent. And if municipality is any help, I'm sure you know this, tourism industry are willing to help you and be no cost to us. And you probably know that, Jen, and anyway, so that's the name there. So they're willing to assist us. Uh, especially, uh, we're starting new, they will give us a template, some to assist staff, if the staff is interested, of course. But overall, uh, it was very good, uh, major, uh, Mayor Segay, one hundred percent against the mayor's powers, one hundred percent. Uh, Mayor D U P, same thing, I can go on and on and on. There was only two that were there to go through Northeastern. They really liked that data. And I won't mention their names. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor.
Hitler, listening.
Any questions for councillor Stefanic? Okay, there being none, I put that, uh, knowledge or, uh, as information to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, council committee updates, uh, we'll do a round table. Councillor Belinda Kissamaker?
I don't have anything right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Drago Stefanic?
Yeah, June five, the, uh, steer committee for immigration virtual meeting, and at that time will be introduced to our new coordinator.
Oh.
Uh, the committee, uh, was struck, um, a month ago, and with that then they should have a new person in place be introduced, and then municipalities will find it when the person travels to have some space time, as I mentioned. They will talk to the staff directly, the new C A O, if they could somehow duck into the facility and assist. We all promoted marketed and I'm looking forward to the meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
Right on. Okay, councillor Peter Kissamaker?
Uh, nothing I just know other than, uh, thanks to, uh, our C A O, she's helping me with the, uh, the checks and balances with the O P P, so I should be able to attend the next board meeting.
Oh, applause, applause.
Or, or a C A O.
Like visiting the jail or what?
No, no.
You said you jumped through a lot of hoops, you got one already, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Well, I'm, I'm anxious to hear about your meeting update when you get to the council.
Well, I'm happy that, that you're happy.
The whole world's happy.
There we go.
I just, I, I, uh, received an invitation just before council meeting tonight to, uh, end and, uh, attend an N H F C reception in Timmins, uh, Minister Perry will be there, and that's on June seventeenth. So I will be attending even though, um, very next day we have good roads coming to our community. I think it's, uh, imperative that I'm there. Looking forward, I, so we will be at A M O. I do think it's important that we do those delegations and prepare ahead of times and, and have a good discussion on our, uh, transactions that will happen there. Uh, we will be receiving sometime later next week, uh, an email from the N W M O. They are, uh, they called, uh, Tim Weber, uh, called me today to inform me that they are starting a citing process for, uh, uh, intermediate and high level fuel, but this is not can do fuel reactors. It sounded very interesting, very promising. It sounds like a similar process to what we were involved with before. And, um, so we'll have further information. If the information comes in time for our eleventh meeting, I'll ensure to forward it. They said they would be sending everything to C A Os and the mayors of communities and, um, and I was thankful that they reached out and they recognized the support that Hornpan had given to the last sighting process, so we can see what's happening with that. I will be reaching out to councillor Scheneman because they did ask me if I would be attending to, uh, F C M. And, uh, and of course, that's where councillor Scheneman's on route to, but, um, I, I am not. So I'm gonna reach out to him and see if he can pick up some information from their booth because they said they will have some information there. Moving forward, I, I just wanted to say that although we've had a lot of roadblocks with the challenges for our big projects, I do want to applaud all of the staff, and I mean this sincerely, that in the background, the work that's done, I know you have your daily tasks that you have to do and dealing with, um, a lot of, uh, public pushback on different things at different times. I know it's very stressful and I do wanna applaud you and thank you for that. And as we move forward, I am hopeful that when we get to the discussion about engineering, that, um, that will be a help for us. Um, because I know all of you wanna see these projects come to fruition, so, uh, and for our community. And I do wanna reiterate the C A O's words that I do think our arena is the heart of our community, and if it was to shut, we would see families leave in troops. So we don't want that. But with that, um, that's the only updates I have so far and, oh, I should say that, uh, the Northern Ontario Women's Association is moving forward with their incorporation, so, uh, council, you know that I'm the president of that. We do have a meeting tomorrow night, uh, talking about our first conference planning meeting. As you know, we've, uh, talked about not being funded to any government entity. We wanna be a standalone association that's funded through sponsorship and, um, on its own. And we're looking at, uh, planning for a twenty twenty six initial conference, maybe possibly partnering with, uh, Phenomenon N O M A at their conferences to provide services. And collaborate there, we're not sure, we're just in the infancy of that. And then we do have a second meeting planned, uh, a, a round table discussion to talk about the stance to support women in politics and how to mitigate the, uh, negative social rea-, uh, social media reactions that, uh, women encounter far heavier than their male counterparts. So, um, a couple of good discussions that are going to be had. And with that, uh, we'll have a full update on June eleventh about the festivities that are coming for Good Roads, uh, to our community. And I wanna thank, um, the Good Roads staff, if they ever see this, and Jen in the background for helping coordinate all of that. It's been a lot of work. And, uh, I thank you for that. Okay. And moving on, uh, we are at, sorry, I lost my agenda here, anything you screen? Okay, so moving on, we are at eleven point one, talking about President and the Union Corporation. And if I can get a mover in a second or, and then we'll open. And if I can get a mover and a seconder, and then we'll open up the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Dragos Stefanik, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the disinfection by product documentation review report as provided by Crescent Engineering Corporation, K E C, and authorizes the C A O to contract K E C to initiate an optimization program. And I'll hand it over to the C A O for discussion.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I'll just, I do have Chris Crescent and Rebecca Smith on the line to answer any questions. But I'll just tee this up for them in council. So we, we've discussed this item in great detail, but we had originally contracted K G S Group out of Saskatchewan to review the Horn Pain drinking water system in an effort to reduce the T H M and H A A reduction. I did, after reviewing the recommendations, as they were very capital intensive, which to me was a little bit of a red flag. However, I don't have a water wastewater engineering background. So I did reach out to Crescent Engineering just to undertake a documentation review. And just to make sure that we were on the right track, just to get a second set of eyes on, on the report. And they did come back and were able to, to produce this memorandum. And they've got some, some other recommendations that I think council will be happy with. And they're here today to speak to the path forward. So with that said, I'll pass it over to, to Chris and Rebecca to, to explain.
Chris, you're still on mute.
Yeah.
Thanks very much, Melanie, for that intro. Appreciate it. So, so councillor, Madam Mayor and councillor, as Melanie indicated, K E C, Becca and myself conducted an overview of what was at the time K G S's draft report. I do see that they do have a final report now, but we haven't had a chance to look at that. But we did look at the draft report. We met with, with Aqua on site at the water treatment plant, ran through the plant with them, some of the things they're doing. Got a good understanding of, of sort of what their approaches are and what their feelings are from, from the operator's perspective. We included feedback from Aqua in our, in our overview that we presented in this brief memorandum for, for council's consideration. Becca, Becca will take us through the memo, but, but, but sort of short and sweet. What we did sort of end up, end up at is we believe that there is some, some opportunity for improvements within the existing capabilities of the plant that don't seem to have been fully vetted or tested or verified prior, prior to sort of coming to a recommendation for some capital expenditure. I think some of the things we saw in our discussion with Aqua is that they are taking steps to optimize and address the H A A issue. And, and they had, had in fact seen a reduction sort of recently to levels below the regulatory limit. So that's, that's a positive and that does tell us that there, there likely is an opportunity to optimize operation of the plant to achieve the goal. So, so with that, I'll hand it over to Becca and she'll just run through that memo quickly. And then perhaps we can, we can field any questions you may have.
Thanks, Chris. So hello, Mayor and Council, and thanks Mel for having us this evening. Yeah, just going through the memo quickly, I'm sure you've had some time to read it. We sort of went through all the documentation in Horn Pain over the past several years. That included, you know, everything from your operational plans to your annual reports, ministry inspections and this K G S report, which we only had the draft of at the time. At that time, we had a, you know, notice that with the K G S report, they had also indicated additional sampling was going to be required in order to sort of pinpoint where, you know, maybe this T H M, H A A issue is stemming from. You know, ways to reduce that itself. And then they went on to talk about some pretty significant capital upgrades. And that's where Mel had contacted us and then we provided this overview. So on May eighth, we came to town and we took a look around the water treatment plant. I, generally speaking, the plant's in really good condition. The operators do a really good job of keeping all the equipment in great shape. But with that, we had noticed, you know, and from the K G S report, that the water treatment plant had really started experiencing H A A issues around twenty twenty two. So something that we need to hone in on is maybe what changed in twenty twenty two, whether that's, you know, change over in staff, knowledge transfer, something going on at the plant, perhaps an upgrade, that, you know, would help sort of pinpoint why this dramatic change in twenty twenty two would happen. And then from there, you know, we found that from our experience, sampling throughout the treatment system, taking, you know, the raw water characteristics and taking a look at what the lake is actually producing. And then finally looking at your distribution system to sort of see where, you know, T H Ms and H As are forming. You know, in the stagnant areas like the ends of pipes, of water towers and things like that. So we really need to do a big holistic overview of the entire system before you want to make any big capital upgrades. So the conclusion and recommendations that we had moving forward was that, you know, we'd like to come back for another meeting. Again, do another site visit, spend a little more time with the operators to get more of a sense of what's going on at the plant. You know, we did talk with them about, you know, the changes that they were making. And we did notice, you know, those couple of points where the H As were below the limit. And they were sort of describing to us as to how they were achieving those things. And so we feel that, you know, they're on the right track. They just need maybe some guidance and some ongoing, you know, documentation and making sure, you know, that we're optimizing what it is that they're currently doing. And, you know, sort of guiding them through that path. Again, yeah, we're going to look at water quality assessments. There's a small list there of the raw water characterization, looking at your unit processes and how they're behaving. And then finally, your disinfection by product formation potential analysis. To do that, we'd be looking at, you know, sampling the raw water source at different points of the treatment system. Again, different points in the distribution system, and that way you can kind of identify where these H As are forming. So we recommend jar testing with alternative coagulants. There's lots out there in the industry right now. We've summarized in the report that, you know, you're sort of bouncing two chemicals to create that optimized coagulation point. What we'd like to do is maybe, you know, there's different chemicals out there that have natural pH adjusting factors within them that perhaps may, you know, optimize your coagulation and coagulation, but removes the organics, which then removes your disinfection by product potential. Another thing that we'd be looking to do then would be working with the Watford and Clean Water Centre and other agencies that then supports small towns with, you know, H A A reduction programs. They've got labs and all kinds of resources that we can utilize if that's agreeable with them. And from our experience, they tend to support small municipalities with these kinds of endeavors. Yeah, at the completion of that, we'd be looking to give you a final report. But then summarizes all the next steps and we could then maybe take a look at, you know, if optimizing processes isn't, isn't enough. You know, maybe there is somewhere, something somewhere that's a reasonable capital upgrade that would make sense for Horn Pain and make sure that they're achieving the affluent criteria that they need. We're able to start this project immediately as long as that's agreeable with Mayor and Council. And yeah, we thank you for the opportunity and for having us here. And if there's any questions, please let us know.
Okay, thank you, Becca and Chris, and thank you for being here. And I'll open up the floor for questions from council. Councillor Stefanik.
Yeah, just a comment. Becca, I love your plan of action. It's precise to the point. You're telling exactly what you're going to do. You're telling what the results you're looking for. I love the plan. Thank you.
And other questions or comments from council? I do have one question, Becca or Chris, if you could answer. For stagnant water, is there some sort of tool or mechanism out there to find out in our current water system where those areas are? Like, are we able to, because when, I just recently learned more about H A As and how that's such a high contributor to the increases in H A As. And my concern is with our water treatment or our water infrastructure in the ground, that over the years during digs, we've found quite questionable infrastructure down there. Like, that was just, or repairs that were done with improper piping or what have you. Or maybe it was the, what was allowed in the day, I'm not sure. But my concern is that I'm, I possibly believe that we do have obstructed areas that are, maybe people are getting water, but there's flow, say, down certain streets or roads that could be cut off and being fed from other areas and creating those dead zones.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think one of the quickest ways to sort of get a handle on that or try to develop an understanding of, of that is to, is to look at, look at your distribution system mapping. So, you know, where you may have dead end, dead end water mains or water mains that run up a street and, and sort of dead end without looping around to create an opportunity for, for flow, continual flow. That, that's certainly, certainly somewhere to start. Another, another consideration is if there is cast iron and or unlined ductile iron pipe in the distribution system, those, those pipe materials tend to corrode to, to a point where they actually cause a reduction in chlorine residual. And what that does is it, is it, is it requires the operator to dose at higher rates of chlorine as, as the water leaves a plant to sustain it in the distribution system. So you're right, Madam Mayor, time in the distribution system exacerbates H A A formation as does an increased chlorine dosage as it leaves a plant.
Okay, okay. So is there any, is there anything above ground like, and I'm, I have no idea and I, I really don't care if this question is stupid. But the metal detector, is there any way that you can detect if there is this other material in the ground that is more highly corrosive? Or do we just have to go back through the paperwork that we have on hand?
Yeah, so, so you can, you can look at your record drawings, your, your, your historical information, hopefully, you know, and sometimes, sometimes you may or may not have that or have it for all of the system. And, and there are other methods that, that can be sort of adapted or used to give you an idea of what the material is in the ground. A lot, for example, you can, you can test for conductivity between hydrants. That'll give you an idea on, on what the material of the pipe is, you know, in the ground that's connecting, connecting hydrant to hydrant. Other times, you know, may, maybe, maybe public work staff have, have some information either, either written down or, or their, their kind of, their kind of knowledge that, that they carry with them. Those are, you know, places to start.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And your asset management, and your asset management plan with the inventory of, of the water main. It might, it might shed some light there as well.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any further discussions or questions? Okay. Okay, I read the motion. I put that motion on the floor for a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, I look forward to working with you and seeing what we can do with minimizing H A As in our water system. Thank you so much for being here tonight, Chris and Becca.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
Just a question for council. Since this is a non-budgeted item, I would like to, and I believe that resolution authorizes this K E C to proceed with this plan. I'd like to add to that, that it be funded from the Water and Sewer Reserve. Just so we know where the, the money is coming from to pay these bills. And we could bring a separate resolution to council next meeting if, if council wishes. That's maybe the best way to handle it, but.
Okay, I just defer to the clerk. Are we able to open the motion with a friendly amendment there? Yes. Okay, so I'm going to open the. Sorry, Richard, it was the, which reserve?
Water and sewer reserve be funded this. These, these expenses be covered through the Water and Sewer Reserve.
Okay, no, I like that. That's clean and accountable. And any further discussion on council, then is council in agreement? I put that motion back on a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, council, we're moving on to eleven point two. It's the proposed council meeting schedule from July to December twenty twenty five. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor. Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council sets the following dates for regular council meetings for July to December twenty twenty five. Wednesday, July twenty third, twenty twenty five, Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty five, Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty five, Wednesday, October eighth, twenty twenty five, Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty five, and Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty five. Be it further resolved that all regular council meetings will commence at six P M and be held in a hybrid format in council chambers and virtually, subject to technical capability. Be it finally resolved that council sets the following dates and times for special council meetings in the same hybrid format. Wednesday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at six P M for a strategic planning review. Wednesday, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty five at six P M for twenty twenty six budget discussions. And Wednesday, November twenty sixth, twenty twenty five at six P M for further twenty twenty six budget discussions. And I open up the floor for any comment or discussion from council. Did you want to speak to your report, John?
If I may, yeah.
Go ahead.
I just, you'll note that I propose doing one meeting a month for the rest of the year. Although it does, with the special meetings, kind of work out similar to how it would normally be done. In order for staff to be able to focus on, for one, we have a lot of policy development that needs to be done. And in the next item, you'll see I mentioned some education opportunities. But primarily just policy development, I, a lot of time is agenda, meeting, minutes follow up. And then the same kind of cycle. So it's been difficult for me to get a whole lot of work done on policy. So just in order to expedite policies.
Okay. That is my question. C A O or, or, yeah, go ahead.
If I can add to that, I think certainly it'll certainly, the biggest difference will be, will be found in the clerks' day to day activities. But it'll certainly make a difference in all of senior management and staff's day to day. I, I supported this recommendation and I asked Jennifer to investigate this possibility as, just again, in the way to improve efficiencies in the, in the, in our day to day administration. Many other municipalities are starting to move towards this. Hurst is, is one of the other communities that we, through our research, found, did this. As Jennifer noted, we kind of are in this kind of Groundhog Day cycle where we leave a council meeting and then begin preparing for the next one. Certainly by going to one council meeting a month. It'll be a larger council meeting and we'll have substantial business. But I think it'll give all of our staff time to focus on making sure that the work is done. And the work is done, done well.
Hey, thank you, Melanie. Councillor Belinda Kissmaker.
I was thinking it probably helped the new C A O get motivated in her position too as well. Everything she has to learn from this community, so.
Right.
It might help her.
Any further comments, councillor Stefanik?
Yeah, I'm sure you recall, Mayor, for, I was for this four years ago, I was for this five years ago, I was for this six years ago. It did not pass at this table. I'm for this hundred percent. Thank you.
I do have one question. With the special meetings, if there are items that are business, we can add them to those meeting agendas at the time?
Okay.
I'm, I really like that it's still basically two meetings a month, but there's a clearer picture of what those other meetings are for instead of adding extra meetings onto our two meetings a month. So that's my comments. Jen, go ahead.
I just want to mention, if this works well for the second half of the year, hopefully it's something we can continue moving forward with. Just, we have a lot of work to do and policies and be good to.
Can I just like that something? Can I just like that something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think as a couns- council member, what scares me is not knowing what's going on in the community. And uh that's why I like to have the two meetings, just because so I can I have a feeling of what's happening. Otherwise, we don't know and it's uh sometimes can be very frustrating. Just just uh say why it probably happened that way.
Okay, thank you for that. I would uh if this goes well, I'd be in favor of it. And would it be the same sort of special meetings for the water rates and then budget and the audit sort of, we would set those?
Yes, um however, uh and Richard might want to speak to this as well. The two uh special meetings for budget this year are to try to iron pretty much all of that out so that we are ready to pass it first thing in the new year.
Did you want to speak to that, Richard?
I think Jennifer's covered it for me. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, if there's no further discussion from council, I'm going to put the council meeting dates uh and uh just as a initial before I put them to a vote, there is no major hindrance where we're not gonna have all of council at any of these dates. Or anyone seeing anything? Okay, they're not, so I put it to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, eleven point two is clerk request for approval of education and career development opportunities. And I get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor. Peter Kiss to maker, second by councillor. Drago Stefanic. Be it resolved that council authorizes the clerk's participation and approves the expenditures to be incurred in the following educational and professional development opportunities. Enrollment in the public administration program at Seneca Polytech and sponsorship for the Governor General's Canadian Leadership Conference upon acceptance to the program. And Jen, would you like to speak to the floor?
Sure, uh I noticed especially in the time where we did not have a C E O kind of the areas that I could use more education in. Also, since I've started, I've wanted to work on getting my diploma in municipal administration through uh N C T O. Uh and so these programs would help build in that area. Uh and as I would like to be here for the long term, it would help me to better serve the community.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Any comments from council? Counselor Drago?
Yeah, thank Mary through you. This is all budget for twenty twenty five.
Um so if I can.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh I spoke to the treasurer about it. And so the first, the only portion I think that we would be paid in twenty twenty five would be about thirty five hundred uh because the seven thousand is broken up per semester. So it would be more a um twenty twenty six budget item, but we do have uh as of last time, Richard checked, which heavily was this week. We have a full ten thousand dollars left in admin, travel and training uh which could help cover my uh first semester's tuition. And if not, he advised that we could look at reserves.
I can agree with that. I think it's really important for staff, uh new staff, staff, to be young staff, I repeat that. Um since I'm old, um to have that possible training and to advance, I think it's a wonderful uh recommendation and I agree with.
All right, thank you. Any further comments from council? Okay, uh just before we put this to a vote, Richard, would you like to amend the motion to include where the funds will come from?
Uh at this time, I don't think we need to. Uh there's a good opportunity or there's a good chance that we'll be able to cover under normal budget. If as we get close to the end of the year and it appears that we may be over budget, we can address that topic at that point in time.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, if there's no uh further comments from council, I'm in agreement. Uh Jen, uh Stephanie to play for the township and Horn Payne as a whole during that time. And um and at that time, we did uh say that we would like to compensate for that law, so I'm totally in agreement. So I put that to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Kiss to maker, um. Kiss to maker, sorry, I didn't see your vote.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, okay. And that is carried. Okay, moving on to bylaws, and I do want to say at eight o'clock, we will be taking a quick break. That may fall right before our close session. Okay, moving on to bylaws, uh the first one is the subscription service agreements. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kiss to maker, second by councillor Belinda Kiss to maker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one thirty one being a bylaw to enter into a subscription service agreement for the provision, hosting and implemented implementation of site mind or fuel management software for the municipal airport between the corporation, the township of Horn Payne and Q T Pod L C LLC and Oregon Limited Liability Company. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on the motion? Carried. Okay, moving on to bylaw number twenty one thirty six, Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Belinda Kiss to maker, second by councillor Drago Stefanic. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one thirty six being a bylaw to authorize the submission of an application to the Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation, O I L C, for financing of certain ongoing capital works of the corporation, the township of Horn Payne, the municipality, to authorize temporary borrowing from O I L C to meet expenditures in connection with such capital works and to authorize long-term borrowing for such capital works through the issue of debit debentures to O I L C pursuant to the housing-enabling water infrastructure stream of O I L C's infrastructure lending program, H E W I lending program. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on the bylaw? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, bylaw number twenty one thirty seven, appointment of C E O. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one thirty seven being a bylaw to appoint a chief administrative officer, C E O for the corporation, the township of Horn Payne, be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on that motion? Or bylaw, go ahead, uh Jennifer.
I just wanted to note that um it is effective as of June ninth uh her start date, but just.
Okay. We're all happy. Okay, I put that bylaw to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to bylaw twenty one thirty eight, appointment C E M C and repeal bylaw number twenty one oh one. Uh mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor Peter Kiss to maker. Be it resolved that bylaw twenty one thirty eight being a bylaw to appoint the community emergency management coordinator, C E M C for the township of Horn Payne and repeal bylaw twenty one oh one, be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. And I put that uh bylaw to vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, council, like I had said, we're going to take a break or or do you want us to go into flow so you can get the computer ready?
No, it's fine.
I just notices, we don't have any?
No.
This is just, okay, that way it's.
I'll take it.
Well, I think.
Actually, I understand.
Okay, we're good to go. Um, just before we go into uh our closed session council, we did inadvertently my apologies, I did not get a mover and a seconder for the appointment of the CIO and the joyous occasion, I forgot. Moved by Councilor Drago Stanak, second by Councilor Peter Kistemaker. Be it resolved that by law number 2137 being a bylaw to appoint a chief administrative officer, CIO for the corporation, the township, the foreign thing be hereby read a first and second time, considered read a third time and finally passed and we can legally vote on that now. Those in favor and uh okay, sorry about that council. And then thirteen motions and notices of motions, we don't have any so now it's fourteen, we're moving into a closed session. If I can get a mover and a seconder please. Moved by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker, second by Councilor Peter Kistemaker. Be it resolved at the next portion of the meeting at eight oh eight PM be close to the public in order to discuss personal matters about an identical individual including municipal or local board employees and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose pursuant to section two thirty nine two B F of the municipal act two thousand one. Those in favor and that is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can get a mover in a second or to open return to open move by Councilor Peter Kistemaker. Second by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporations, the township, the quarantine does hereby return to open council at 9:00 P. M. Those in favor and that is carried. So we do have some business arising from the closed session. One is a motion. If I can get a mover in a second or please move by Councilor Peter Kistemaker. Second by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker and I'll defer to you Jen to read the motion.
Be it resolved that council hereby adopts performance management policy as an appendix to the human resources policy manual. Be it further resolved that council hereby establishes a performance management committee with membership to include the mayor, the deputy mayor, and a professional human resources support.
Okay, and I put that to both those in favor and that is carried. And I'm not sure if there's any further updates from the closed session as I did declare a thought loop.
Item fourteen point four, they're staffing. The item is still in progress and ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to an adjournment with the confirmatory move by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker. Second by Councilor Peter Kistemaker. Be it resolved that by law number twenty one thirty nine being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular meeting. On each way five, we hereby read a first and second item considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? That is carried and our adjournment move by Councilor Drago Stefanik. Second by Councilor Peter Kistemaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council on a Wednesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five at nine oh two P. M. Those in favor and that is carried. Right on council.